I made a mistake, sorry about that. We're trying to keep this all secret.
Are we ready to start?
Barbara.
Stand by for one minute for legal, please. Stand by for legal. We're waiting on our.
Barbara is not the.
Okay, she's coming down right now. You're coming down?
Give us some, a minute, too. Morning, Barbara.
Good morning, Barbara. All right, Chair, we have everybody here present. Chairman Dela Cruz, we have everybody here present, ready to start the meeting?
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome to today's meeting. I'm having a little hard time on mic. Give me one second. Okay, can we start off with Pledge of Allegiance? Supervisor Bertella, will you please lead us off?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Everybody, make sure your face mask is secured to your face and ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Problem with face masks, you know, you can't tell if anyone laughs at your jokes.
All right, Dulce, you want to do a house cleaning?
Yes. So if you're joining us Zoom by phone, hit star nine if you would like to make a public comment when, when the time arrives. If you're joining us via Zoom, you have the ability to hit the, the little, the little hand icon on the bottom. And every speaker, speaker will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will now go to regular agenda. How can you services, give us an update on Corona nineteen Tracy?
Morning, everybody. Dulce.
We need to do posting and all that, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
You need to do B, call the order of Pledge of Allegiance, acknowledge certificate of posting.
Can I apologize? That's right. Can I have a certificate of posting? Is there a second? All those affairs say hi?
Hi.
Again, motion carries. Five zero. Okay. Because there is a, because it's a special meeting, there will be no public comment today. We'll go straight to the first item on their special meeting, that is, regular agenda item number one, Tracy?
Uh, let me, uh, Tracy, before you start up, Mr. Chair, this Jim, I just want to make a clarifying comment. People can comment on the actual agenda items on the agenda, however, there's just no general public comment. Just so people that are listening and know you have the ability to comment on the actual item, however, just no general comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gillio. Tracy?
Good morning. Thank you for having me here this morning. I'm, my first Zoom meeting, so bear with me if I adjust to this. So the first page of the slide show, you will, you'll see that we updated our, our dashboard. Not only is the data updated, but we also added Spanish to the dashboard. We realized that we didn't have it translated. So under each area, you'll see that we've added Spanish. Since the last board meeting, our case count has increased by four. We currently have three active cases, forty-three recovered and forty-eight total cases. Next slide. So I have this titled face covering order and shelter in place amended order. So the county health officer issued a face covering order on Friday, April twenty-fourth, that went into effect yesterday morning at eight AM. All individuals engaged in essential activities in the public, stores, et cetera. If you work in an essential business, you're required to wear face covering. The limitations to that is if you're in your own office working, you do not need to wear face covering. But should someone enter your office, you're required to wear face covering. And children twelve and under are not required to wear face covering. Parents or guardians who want their children to wear them, that is at their discretion and we advise them to monitor them wearing them. There's also some other exceptions to the face covering order that are listed in the order. For people who may have difficulty breathing or their doctors are recommending that they don't wear them, it's listed in the order. So I encourage everyone to take a look at the order. It is posted on our website. It appears that we did have a difficulty getting it posted. I apologize over the weekend. It is there now, though, however. The county health officer also amended our shelter in place order to allow parks and golf courses to open with protocols. We continue to assess these protocols as we move forward. The county also is continuing to assess the need for current shelter in place order, which is due to expire on May third of two thousand and twenty. We continue to assess the need for the county specific shelter in place order versus the governor's stay at home order. There's been lots of questions around, do we need both, which one would serve us better? And we are currently in discussions about that now as we speak. It's imperative again to remember that the governor's stay at home order issued on March nineteenth has no, must continue to be followed. The county's just input on how to relax the shelter in place order while adhering to the governor's stay at home order. So we had a business call Friday and a lot of the businesses were online. And I know that they didn't have an opportunity to ask as many questions as they wanted to, may not have gotten answers or have some ideas and suggestions on how we can consider relaxing the order. I encourage people to email us at the email listed below. This is going to be a fast process, but we're open to feedback. We've gotten several suggestions for local realtors. Also, our golf courses, some of our faith-based community has also reached us. We're open to hear what people think and we would appreciate the feedback. Today, the governor is expected, that's how he plans to reopen businesses, so we'll be paying attention to that as well. As I said, we're still moving and assessing this as we speak now. Recommendations and changes being assessed to our shelter in place order. So we, the county is recommending the development of a roadmap to recovery advisory committee made up of representatives from each of the following. So the county administrative office, the city manager from the San Antonio County cities, law enforcement, office of ed, healthcare community, the business community, the faith-based community and public health. This committee is not intended for elected officials. It's intended for members of the public to help us drive how we are going to recover our county. The county cannot live on its own without the governor modifying the statewide stay at home order. But the committee's goals will be to ensure a coordinated approach to gradually reopen the county while addressing the public health and economic emergency. So we are in discussion on how we're going to move forward on this. It's a system that we feel will help drive our county as well as assist with our office or make decisions on, on how to move forward. Currently, the county is assessing the ability to relax the following businesses and activities in the order. And I listed them here. Construction, faith-based services, funerals and weddings, real estate services, automobile sales and gardeners. There may be some other ones that we're assessing. I just listed the top that I could, that I, that I knew we were looking at and discussing and having active conversations about. And so we will be poring through those the remainder of this week. There, the governor proposed an emergency feeding program to ensure Californians that are age sixty-five and over, individuals who have been, who have contracted the virus, but don't need hospitalization or at risk with underlying health conditions have regular access to prepared meals. We are currently assessing the need for this. There's very specific guidelines of who qualifies for these programs. It can't supplant enough the program. The timeframe is very short and the requirements are very strict. And so we're currently in discussion, see if we can implement this program here. One of the, I believe, I didn't put the date down, but I believe it was only a two-week program. And the requirements are that the restaurants, we have to have the restaurants that are willing to deliver food. They all have to be live scanned and receive a criminal clearance. And currently, the live scan machines, because of such close contact, are not being used. And so we're trying to see if there's a workaround to figure out how to get a criminal clearance on those individuals or use another service that can, that already has this requirement satisfied. Some good news for our county. The governor and our CDPH created a partnership and we were chosen as a priority COVID nineteen testing site. So Optum Serve has contracted with the state to conduct the testing. The possible start date for us to start testing here is May fourth. We've secured the vets building as a main site for testing. We're exploring some other sites in possibly in San Juan Matisse and/or Roma. There's no fee associated with this test. There's a possibility for alternative and weekend hours to conduct testing. And the county is responsible for coordination with Optum Serve, marketing and cleaning of the testing site after it ended. There is clinical testing criteria for these tests and the specific populations to be tested. Our healthcare workers, first responders, skilled nursing facility staff, individuals with chronic health conditions, individuals over sixty, farm workers and individuals with mild symptoms who do not need the emergency room. This is still a work in progress. We were on a call yesterday regarding this. There's still limited details. And we've yet to receive a call from our Optum Serve coordinator, and so we're waiting to hear that. So I will be able to provide more information as it comes available to us. We are phase two of the rollout, so there are several counties that were listed as phase one. We're phase two, so May fourth is really a soft start date for us. And they hope to test between ninety and a hundred and thirty individuals a day. And the test results come back within two to three days, I believe, is what they're hoping for. So that's some good news for our county that we were selected as a testing site. And just an update on our shelter in place non-essential business enforcement. To date, we've had forty businesses that have been deemed non-essential and five that are pending investigation. But that is all for my updates. And we do have a panel available to present out some data that's been requested from the board and the public on some information. Lynn Mallow, our deputy director of public health services, is going to be on the panel. Mallory Schmidt, who is our epidemiologist. Marty White, I'm sorry, Mary White, who's our pharmacist and our county health officer, Dr. Marty, are on the call. Was public health mic unmuted? Some information that they'd like to present. Dulce, was their mic unmuted?
We are looking for them right now. Did they log on under?
Yes, they're listed under attendees of public health.
Can I recommend we go over to Dr. Marty while we're trying to work this out?
Dr. Marty, do you have any input?
Hi there, I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, Tracy did a great job in giving you a summary of where we are. I'm, I'm happy to see that our case numbers are steadily moving in the right direction. Tracy mentioned we have forty-eight cases. We have a couple more, so we're, you know, they're not investigated yet and not official. But we're, we're up to fifty cases at this point. And again, those new cases just came in, so we continue to have, just so you know, we continue to have cases. We haven't gone to any, to a zero area, but it's very clear from the data and from perhaps some information you might be able to see if it's being presented that as of the date of our shelter in place order, which was March seventeen, ahead of the state, the numbers began to drop precipitously. And that's again because of people not exposing themselves to one another. And so I'm very happy about that, although we're, we're still seeing cases. Our hospitals, when you think about again what the governor wants in place before opening up the state, that's one of them, you know, that our case numbers begin to drop. We also need to have a hospital that's able to meet capacity if we begin to open and see, and then see new cases fire up, which we will. And our hospital is up and ready and, and able to see cases because, again, they've done a great job in getting patients identified, taken care of. And, and I don't believe at this point we have a COVID nineteen patient in the hospital. I could be wrong. But, so we're in a status of green now. We have that status of green, yellow and red in order to give us a sense of our capacity and triggers that we may need in order to surge up for additional cases. But we need all of this ready to go as we begin to think of opening up our businesses and our county. Because the whole idea is that in doing this, we then put potential for susceptible people next to each other. And then we will then see new cases and we have to be ready to take care of them. And this is to be expected. So the idea is that we would test them. And as you heard, we have been designated as a testing site. This is such great news to me that we could possibly do anywhere from five to eight thousand tests over the next sixty days in San Benito County. And again, those are very targeted tests, so we want to make sure that we get people at the highest risk. The people that are in the essential services, people in our, in our shelters, perhaps in ag area, you know, people that are, are putting themselves out and maybe at risk. We want to, I, I would certainly like to be able to do some surveillance also on patients, on people that have no symptoms to see what things look like. And as you remember, we are overrepresented in our Latino community where our cases represent sixty-eight percent of our cases and our population demographic is sixty percent Latino. So I think those, all of those areas we have to think about and figure out as we move forward on where and how we will do this testing. I don't want to, I want to be able to use every single one of these tests that are being made available free to us in, by the state. So that's going to be a little bit of a logistics trial for us to figure out. But that's the plan so that we will be able to do that. We have the facial covering order in place and, which became effective on Monday. I noticed that certainly there are many other places around the country that are just now thinking and doing this. This, again, the reason for this is to really protect people as we begin to open up. There's new data out there that is also telling us that the amount of virus that you get, that you say you were getting exposed to somebody that's infected. If you can keep yourself from getting a lot of those droplets and a lot of virus, meaning that you catch just a small dose, then it seems like your course potentially for the disease will be milder. So again, the facial mask, if it's another barrier just to keep you from getting more droplets of infection, then that's a good thing. So another good reason for having the facial coverings in place. I think we had a good meeting with the business community in our town hall meeting. And as Tracy said, we want to put together a group of people to begin looking at how business will be when the governor opens up. My sense is he's not ready to do that yet, but we need to get people prepared. As we even begin opening now, and I think as we mentioned in certain areas that Tracy already mentioned, we can, we can, we can do that again. And I would like to extend our order. It gives us the ability to be very specific about making sure that as things open up, that we do it safely, that we have protocols in place and that we can oversee to make sure that all of these businesses are performing in a way to protect their workers and their, and the patrons coming into their establishments. So I'd like to, again, have input from them and figure out new ways, new business practices depending on their various types of business so that they can, again, operate in a safe manner. And as I said, it's going to be slow, but again, we are under the governor's order. As far as what the other Bay Area counties are doing, they are prepared to extend their orders. Probably tomorrow, they will be releasing, today or tomorrow, they will be releasing their updated shelter in place orders. I honestly don't know exactly what they will be easing up, but they will be issuing new orders. And the governor we're, we're going to hear from today, although my sense is, given, given the modeling and the statistics that the governor is not going to announce any general opening today, and that may not come for several weeks as we move forward. So I would just say again, our community has done very well. And, you know, don't be lulled by the fact that we, that we look good and we're not seeing a lot of, a lot of cases. It's because of the, what we have done and the way that we have responded has kept us pretty, in, in pretty good shape. And I'd like to continue that and slowly open up our economy and do this in a very strategic manner so that we don't, so that we continue to be able to take care of our cases and isolate all of our contacts to cases. And now with our new testing capability for the next sixty days, we will be able to test, test a lot of people. And so those are all very good things, very good news for us. And I think that's our, you know, that, that's the way we should move forward over the next several weeks. I'll stop there.
Thank you, doctor. Any questions from the board?
Okay, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I know the, my colleagues on each side of me probably have questions. I'll go first, I guess. I, I know, I sat in on a conference call this week, or last week, I'm sorry, that the state OES is really working hard in, in an ad hoc committee to increase the, the testing in the state, you know, by more than twenty-five thousand by the end of this month on eighty new sites. And I guess we're pretty fortunate in San Benito County to, that we're be able to do a substantial amount of testing. It sounded like from this, this report. And my, I guess, Dr. Marty or Tracy, the emphasis is going to be more the, I hate using this term, we got to find a new term, essential type of, of workers, the public, public safety and health first and then high risk as far as the elderly. And that's the, the, the testing order that we're, we're trying to implement? Is that the way I understand it? That's a question.
I, I, I think I agree with it. There are some parameters that are coming with this testing, with, with this testing capability that the state is providing. The idea, again, is that we make sure that our testing focuses on the people at, at certainly at the highest risk. People that are putting their, people that are in shelters, people that are putting their lives on their line, again, that are working in essential services, that we make sure that they are being tested so that they are, so that we know their status. Our vulnerable population, and again, how to identify those people. We know that people that are elderly who were at other types of conditions like hypertension and diabetes, they are at higher risk. People in congregant settings, our skilled nursing facility, so a lot of those. But we may have enough tests and I'm hoping that we also will just be able to get enough tests to do some general surveillance in our, of our community also to see exactly the numbers of people that perhaps are already infected and are not showing any symptoms. So that would be the asymptomatics. But the priority for these tests, as they've been given to us, are, as I stated. So again, trying to make sure that those people that would be most affected by getting infected meaning the higher risk people would be targeted to be tested first. But we have a good number of tests and as I said, I don't want to, I don't want to give back single tests from what they're giving us. So it's going to take some work to get identified all of those people and get them in in an orderly fashion to be seen and to be tested.
So there would be some sort of notification process that we're exploring as far as you should come in and get tested? Is that how we're trying to, you know, utilize the, the highest capacity of our testing ability?
Yes. They've given us an option for one site or more sites. We're looking at that. We want a central site. It looks like that people really have to be registered to be tested. But we have to look at that too, because we can't just say to people, go online and register. Not a lot of, not everybody has internet services. And, and so we may have a, need a call center. We may need to have people actually go out and look at how we get people registered and, and get them in so we have a scheduled testing service. And, and it's very organized. I have to say it's a challenge to do that if you think of all those tests. And, and certainly the people we're identifying are not necessarily those with all high-tech capabilities. So we're going to have to work very hard at making sure we get those people notified, registered to come in at certain times so that they're not waiting around in line. We don't want congregated people standing waiting for a test. So it has to be very organized.
Right.
Need to take these days ahead of time, you know, to get, get that all organized. And public health, Tracy and, and others will be working on, on that.
Yeah, and then I have one, one last question here that I wrote down is, so hypothetically, a person goes in, gets a test and comes back negative. Does that clear that, what's to prevent that person from contracting the COVID nineteen the following week and all of a sudden becoming positive again? Is, is the test showing that you're immune? Or is the test showing you haven't been infected yet? And then how does that, how does that help us reopening now?
Right, and, and that's a good question. The test, the test that they're giving us is the test that we do to detect people that are infected right now. That's the swab that we put in your, in your throat or your nose. So it's a snapshot test. If I get my, if I would get that test today and I'm negative, if I get exposed in two days from now and develop COVID nineteen, that test doesn't help me, you know, it tells, it told me I was negative yesterday, but it doesn't tell me what may happen. The, the test that down the road, we hope we will, but we don't have capacity right now is the antibody test. And that's the one that says, we look at your blood and it tells us whether your body had exposure to the test anytime in the past and if you are immune or not. So right now, it's a, it's a snapshot test. It'll, it's still a good test because it'll tell us if anybody's infected. People do shed virus for quite some time and so it will tell us if we have active cases. And then from that standpoint, we'll take all of those cases, immediately isolate them and go, and go and do contact testing, contact tracing and testing of people near them. So that we're trying again to, you know, to cohort or to put these people away from other people for a time until they get over that infection. So we're trying to keep these cases down. cases down.
Okay. Well, you know, I just, you know, was hoping that this would lead us more towards the ability to reopen our economy. As we test more, we should be reopening our economy just because we're able to monitor and survey, but we're not quite there yet. You're at the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Put me on the list, Tommy, please.
Yes, sir.
Jim as well.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Okay, I have a couple of questions, so I'll try to be not, I try not to be too long-winded, but the first question is dealing with the testing. And, you know, I understand that if you look at the three counties, four counties, San Benito, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, and Monterey, we have the highest test rate per 100K. In San Benito, we're at 1,405. Santa Clara is at 1,319. Santa Cruz is at 1,276, and Monterey lags behind at 625. Our basically test positive rate is about 5.4% in comparison to Santa Clara, which is 8.2, and Santa Cruz, 3.5. What I'm looking at here now is a couple of different things, doctor. I agree 100% on the decision we made on March 17th of 2020. The information we received from you and from all the surrounding communities or counties, we decided to shelter in place, which was a very wise decision on your part and the board's part. The shelter in place for the state of California did not start till March 19th of 2020, which is two days later. So what happened was, we were more strict than what the state of California came out two days later with. So now fast forward to April 28th of 2020. We're looking at these numbers. Our positive cases have decreased dramatically in the last 14 days. So what I would like to ask and have your opinion on is why can't we just adopt the California order? Is there some type of risk that you're thinking? Is there something we can do? I know Tracy had said about putting together a team and come up with an idea of how we can open up some of these businesses, but the question I have here is two things. What's the timeframe? We need a date. We can't just say we're going to bring people together and figure out how we're going to do this. I would, number one, like to see a date. And then, of course, I want to make sure that in the same conversation you have, doctor, is we educate everyone out there that's listening or that is writing about this COVID-19. The state of California has a shelter in place order. We must abide by that. We, as a county, or as 58 counties within the state of California, we can be more stringent. We can be really, really careful and say we can't do anything, but we can't be more relaxed than the state of California. So what I'm asking here is, in summary, is would you be willing to look at this and have San Benito County adopt the state of California ordinance? And if not, what is the reasoning behind that when our levels have decreased dramatically in the last 14 days? Doctor?
Yeah. Well, you know, when I look at the state's order, I see a single page. I don't know if you looked at it.
Yes, I did, sir.
But it basically just says, we're going to follow the 16 essential, federal essential service categories. And there's no detail whatsoever of anything. It just lists the, it lists all of these 16 essential services areas as stipulated by the federal government. So what we have been able to do in the Bay Area, what we said initially, of course, was we need to give a little bit more specificity to what we do. And because there's no data, there's no guidelines really to what's in the governor's order, and the governor knew that, and knowing moving forward that locals would be able to have some flexibility in their orders around the state depending on where they were, since everybody is a little different. So I think we still have the same capability of doing what we can to open the community within the guidelines, but it gives us a little bit of ability to specify how people can go about this. It allows us then to sit with businesses, or as we did even with construction, to say, okay, this is what you have to have in place to protect yourself. There's nothing in this state order that says any of that. So I don't think it impedes us in any regard. It allows us to work closely and to help those businesses come up with safety precautions and guidances that they would institute so that they, say as a restaurant, would do things differently down the road, that they would have less people in there, that they would let people in on a certain basis, that workers would be protected in certain ways. Or that construction that we have now instituted protocols so that people, so that workers are protecting themselves. There's hand washing, there's social distancing. None of that is in the state order. When I look at it, at least the state health officer has a single page of just a list, go look up the federal guidance for essential services. So I think it's to our benefit, to our advantage, to be able to stipulate how to protect and help through guidances, not to be restrictive, not to be punitive with people, but to say, here, you know, here is how we can help and work with you to make this work and to make everything safe, and we can move slowly forward. I don't think, I, you know, I think it benefits us, if anything, and it's not a detriment. It's more work for us, but yet it provides us the ability to work with our community and to begin opening up as we see fit, but that doesn't stop us from doing it. We still have to follow the state guidelines in general, but it gives us a little flexibility to educate and to help come up with guidance for our businesses as they open up and work with them to make this a safe opening for our community so that our workers, our businesses feel safe, and people that are going to go into these places. Just because we open up doesn't mean people feel safe to go into them, as we've seen in places in other parts of the country. So it's our ability to work with them, to provide our expertise and guidance to make sure that all of these businesses are doing, you know, doing whatever they need to do to keep everyone safe moving forward. But we don't back, we don't want to backpedal into a situation where we end up with additional cases that we don't know about.
Supervisor Medina?
Well, once again, I mean, you know, when I'm looking at it, you're not answering my question. My question is, when can we move forward? Is there a date? I mean, you're saying, test more people. Well, how many more people? You're saying, well, we need to see more statistics. What statistics do we need? You're providing a lot of gray area. There is no goal in mind. Do we have targets?
We can move today. Yeah, we can move today. We can work on our, our order is up on the 3rd. We can move today and start opening up things that we can that aren't under the state and work with people to have those guidelines in place. A lot of them are, so I would say we start right away. Our testing is not going to be in place till probably next week because that's when they're coming, but there's nothing to stop us from doing this immediately. Again, we can't supersede the state, so...
I'm not asking, I'm very clear on that. I'm not asking, and I said that from the beginning, is we cannot supersede the state. We have to be equal to or less than the state. We have to be more stringent, more forceful than the state. I have never, and I will never say we have to go against the state. I'm just referring to bringing us to concur with the state's guidelines. And, you know, I think we're both on the same page there, sir.
Yeah, sure, sure. And we can do it today. I mean, we can start modifying those orders today to make things easier, and as we go forward, as things, as we get that permission to do, to move, as the state moves, then we'll do more of that. But again, I think the important thing, as Tracy mentioned, is that when things do open up, I assure you that the governor is basically going to say this under these parameters. So we want businesses to start planning for that, as you've seen, and it won't be business quite as usual, at least initially.
At this point in time, sir, I'm not worried about when the governor brings up everything to open up the non-essential. I'm talking about what's in the order now, because that's what we have in front of us. We're guessing about what the governor's going to do in a day or two days. What I'm referring to is the current order in place, and that's, you know, what I want to, me personally, there's five of us, but this is what I want to focus on. What can we do today?
Yeah, well, we can certainly look at construction areas. Tracy mentioned a few of them. We're talking about a number of them, but I see no reason that we can't open up construction totally again. That's fine, but we want to, you know, if you're a worker in construction, you want to make sure that everything you do is to keep yourself and your family safe, and I think a lot of those we've already put in place and we expand that. Landscaping, gardening, I think, another area that we're looking at to expand. We've already done parks, golf courses. And again, looking at some of the other potentials, I know that some of the car washes that are not even hands-on, people have asked about that. I see no reason that we can't have the hands-free type of car washes operating, and then other things that we can look at that will not put anyone else in danger, you know, anyone in harm's way by opening them. So we're ready to do that.
So now, the second part...
And I want to do that because, you know, our order expires on Sunday.
Okay, so the new order will take all this into consideration?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's...
Absolutely. I'm on board with that. I'm absolutely on board with that, but I just wanted to explain to everyone, the reason that we're on, the reason that we can do this, is all the other stuff that we've done, and I commend our community for being, you know, for being so diligent, and the fact now that we're getting the testing and the hospital's done so well, I said, we're moving in a really good direction. And this will, you know, we will open, and we will start opening immediately.
Well, I sure do thank you for your expertise, you being a doctor. You're taking this scientifically, you're looking at the data, whereas myself, I'm more of a businessperson. I want to open up business, but then there's people like yourself that provide me with data and information to look elsewhere. I just want to make sure we can open up, and we can open up safely, and the data does show that. So once again, I thank you for all your hard work, and sorry to be such a pain in your thorn, or thorn in your side.
No, I thank you for being understanding and trying to understand all this complicated stuff, that sometimes it's just a lot, a lot of information to take in.
Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Marty, some of the things that I'm going to say are going to echo Supervisor Medina's comment, and I'll try to skip as many as I can, just to, in the effort of not trying to be repetitive. So 317, again, for people listening, we at the county listened to your advice, and honestly, I think it was sage advice at the time that we needed to do something because the state hadn't acted, so we acted on the 17th. The state came in, two days later, acted with a state shelter in place order. And then on the 31st, we extended, San Benito County extended their order, and obviously on this Sunday night, it's going to expire on May 3rd. I appreciate your explanation about why, because that was what many of my constituents wanted answers to. Why don't we just allow our order to expire and follow the state order? What I heard you say made a lot of sense. The state order is very vague, and if we have something in place that allows a path to reopening, I think that makes a lot of sense to me. Many of my constituents wanted to reiterate to you, and I feel the same way, that we should be focusing on a risk-based plan right now, as opposed to a blanket, one-size-fits-all approach. We're not San Francisco County, we're not even Santa Clara County, obviously, we're not Solano County. Our population density is completely different now, so I really encourage you. Would you mind commenting on that? Does that make sense to you to have this be a risk-based approach and treat each business individually? Every business may have a way to safely open and operate that makes sense, and maybe, you know, as long as we're not stepping on the state order, as you already mentioned. I'm not suggesting that. Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree with you.
Okay, so that's great. We're going to work on that risk base.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Peter, well, actually, hold on, Supervisor Hernandez, Supervisor Gilio still has the floor.
Yeah, I'll keep rolling here and finish up. And then the, Dr. Marty, do you have anything in front of you that talks about the last time we had like an exponential doubling of growth? One of the things that you had talked to me about in the past was that the rate that your infection doubles in your community is concerning. I don't think we've doubled in quite some time. And then also dovetailed into that question, we've been told over the last two weeks or so that we need to see a lot of zeros and ones indicating either zero infections or one infections per day prior to coming up with a plan to open our local businesses back up. Can you comment on those two items?
Well, our numbers, you know, our numbers are small, so you have to take that into consideration, that we don't have large numbers so that they are totally statistically significant. But our numbers in general, and, you know, our great epidemiologist has been able to show us the curve, and the curve is down. But as I said today, we're working on another three cases, and these are going to pop up, so it's not going to be zeros. But the issue is more important, can we test any contacts and isolate them so we don't have any more of these little pop-ups? And as testing comes, we'll have that capability, and so I expect that we will see additional cases. But then we, of course, work with our hospital, which is not the same situation in every other county that is really not seeing and emptying of their hospital beds. We have hospital beds, and so we can handle a few infections, and in fact, most of those are not requiring hospitalization, but if we need to at this point and going at this rate, we're fine. You know, we're green at the hospital, we will have testing, our case numbers are dropping, but I expect every day that we see a couple few cases, and that doesn't bother me as long as I don't have to worry that where are we going to put them and who's going to take care of them? And can we then identify all of their contacts and isolate or quarantine those people? So it's almost like having a small fire burning, and as long as we keep that fire low, we can afford to put a little bit of fuel to it and still handle it without it flaring up. So we're not flared up, but we're burning on a low, you know, we're burning on a low fire here, low flame, and I think we can handle small bits, small numbers of cases as we open up, and we will see some additional cases. And so far, that's going to be okay, and I think that's just the way it's going to open up across the state and the country eventually.
I appreciate that. That was my next question on the list, was the hospital capacity. You addressed that, and we've heard from the emergency room doctor several times as well. And next, I'm going to skip over, but just mentioned that Supervisor Medina already covered it, the roadmap to reopen. I'm looking at our CAO, and I'm telling him that I expect with, hopefully, the concurrence of three members of the board, that we're going to start this today. We're going to get going immediately after this meeting. This is going to be the number one priority, to get a group together, to have recommendations ready so that on Monday morning, we are, when our order expires, we're ready with a plan to implement so that businesses know and can expect exactly what they're going to need to reopen. Dr. Marty, I've asked you this at a couple other meetings, on Appendix A in our current order, it lists basically what the existing open businesses are required to have in place in order to operate. We had suggested in the past on Friday, and then at our Tuesday supervisor meeting before, that if a business wanted to quote-unquote "see into the future and see what may be needed," again, no guarantees, no requirement, but that Appendix A would be...
again, no guarantees, no requirement, but that Appendix A would be a really good place for them to start if they needed to get supplies or plan. Is that still accurate?
Yes. Yeah, that, that type of appendix, which is, again, for those that don't know, it's a kind of a list of things to be thinking about and to put into place as you consider reopening your business. And so even if they're unable to open it under governor's orders right now, we can still have what we call a business plan or a protocol for opening. And so once that's set up, when the time comes, everything's in place. And so that's a good place to begin, and that's still available. And I think we actually use that in construction when we, when we did some modification of our construction guidelines, and they use that, and I think to their advantage. So yes, that's available.
Great. And then, just, this is just gonna be a, a final comment, is we've asked an incredible amount from our entire community, from our folks that are stuck at home because they are not considered quote-unquote essential, from our businesses that haven't been able to operate. And, and frankly, it's, it's weighing on our community. We've, we've asked, they've delivered. They've, they've delivered, they've worked hard to do everything that, that the health order has required, and it's time to allow a, a reopening in a safe manner. I appreciate your dedication to this, and I appreciate the Health Officer Tracy Belton stating that this will not be a political process. It's not gonna be a selection based on somebody's district or somebody's political affiliations. This will be a fair process, and I, I really appreciate that. And any resources that you need, please don't hesitate to ask the, the C A O or the Board of Supervisors for any resources that you possibly need. And then I would just encourage to get everybody started right away. Getting all those calendars together is gonna be tough, but it's gonna be a huge priority, and, and I, I hope we can start immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Gilio. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about earlier. It seemed like there was a, some kind of a drop-off, but I wanted to make sure that I, I was initially thinking that I would just ask the question and let the doctor answer it. I think I would ask it within context of, of my statement, if that's okay. And to, you know, ultimately, I've really thought about, it, it's funny, because I'm literally running out of fumes as far as energy, because I've, I've been on the phone all day, talking to leaders, talking to admin, to staff. So my comments expressed have been with much long-suffering, learning, looking at data, engaging with staff, county council, and definitely listening to, to my community, including my business community. My first, my frustration starts with what I felt was completely ignoring the concerns the Board of Supervisors initially had. It seems like they're changing their tune with, with you, Dr. Marty, about the rollout of this shelter in place. To start off, and just as two quick reference points, there's holes with the mask order, no pun intended. The reason why I mention the mask order is not because I oppose it, but because I'm afraid it will be used as an excuse ultimately, if there is a spike, and we blame the public or business community really for a faulty mask order. And this is what I'm, what I'm referring to. How are businesses going to police their customers requiring them to wear masks when liability, I don't believe, will allow people who have valid medical reasons to have to wear? So are they supposed to police private doctors' orders, private doctors' orders, ensuring they have a medic, a valid medical reason why they can't wear a mask? What if customers are exempt? How will the business owners prove customers are exempt? You said mask orders doesn't replace social distancing. Doesn't mask orders by default encourage less social distancing? So again, I'm not trying to attack or ultimately, it's questioning according to the rationale, according to engagement with my public and, and ultimately with, with staff and county council involved. So the point I'm really trying to make is, I, I really believe this is like whack-a-mole, because with your supposed solutions, you answer one question and then three more pop-up. Therefore, therefore, questions can't go on, obviously, forever, but my main point is the burden that is laid on the people themselves, that you, Doctor, with all due respect, couldn't lift if you were in their place. There's a powerful statement in the Declaration of Independence, one of our guiding documents, which gives clarity to our system of laws, the Constitution of the United States, which you and I are bound by. That says, "Men will suffer evils while evils are sufferable." That is to point out the choice a person is being forced to consider in despair, and therefore quite possibly not in all of their senses, when the crushing weight of these orders get too heavy to bear. Where's the metrics on that, Dr. Marty? Where are your scientific models highlighting that? To be clear, the air is, to clear the air, basically, as far as your authority, and this is again, not intended as an offense, but you're an unelected bureaucrat. You're not an elected legislator that rules out policy. And again, that's not meant as an insult, but to point out the reality, to remind people that the last time that, that type of damage caused by one individual was only possible in a different type of government, which is not our system, that we're not supposed to resemble, and that is obviously a mana, monarchy, where, where basically too much power is given to one individual, and, and ultimately unaccountable, again, because you're unelected. I can't afford, I mean, my goal isn't, again, to hurt your feelings, but I can't afford to worry about that over public interest. You set guidelines, not policy, which it makes it very hard to be successful at process. Even the governor ultimately set guidelines that you're having a hard time figuring out how to digest and, and roll out. You, you know, you really can't tell business how to implement policy successfully, which is why I question this idea, and, and I heard Supervisor Gilio mention not trying to make it political. I mean, we're elected legislators. Our goal is literally to listen to the people, understand what, what, what their sentiments, how they do, I mean, in essence, policy and how to implement it. If we're disengaged from that process, how is it gonna roll out successfully when you're basically separating the accountable point, because you ultimately are our employee? I cringed in our town hall meeting this last Friday, hearing you speak, again, no offense, when what was supposed to be a hopeful message turned into doubt and despair. I firmly believe when you talk, you're talking as if you're looking at Santa Clara, not San Benito County, not to mention a top-down implementation, cut and paste of Santa Clara Public Health Order that doesn't reflect the San Benito County reality. I get it, we have to, we have to pay attention to their cases, but ultimately, again, it's a different reality, different demographic, a whole lot of differences between us and them. We, the Board of Supervisors, supported you March 18th with the public health order that accepted the likes of grocery stores without a mask and very high exposure, and shut down businesses that are very low-risk because you deem them non-essential, as if every business isn't essential. Their customers would disagree with you, and so would our economy. Now, I'm not lobbying to oppose essential businesses or against a mechanism that protects public health, but again, to point out, this model about sheltering in place still has huge margins of error that allowed very high risk, and to reiterate, the case count was still low. To be clear, we have no guaranteed controls that people working outside our community are either being safe, according to the Santa Clara Public Health Order, or visiting family or friends outside our community. To highlight, no matter what we roll out, there's no guarantees, and we not, we not only need to accept that reality, but that the community will still be blamed for increasing cases, even if your public health order is faulty. You wanna say you want input from the business community, but you barely got a county email today available to the public, and, and we're literally on, on the heels of May 4th. And, and we're talking about a process, about how to engage lifting the shelter in place. We're taking the legislators out of the process. So we're in a place where we do have many facts, and I get it, ultimately, there's a lot of information being thrown around, but the fact that we do have our, on our current caseload, the impacts and what will always be an imperfect process, trying its hardest to guarantee no infection, against something that is just not possible, you admitted it yourself. So I pose another very important question. What if we actually trusted the people to do the right thing, instead of this all-over-the-place approach to compliance? We've had many folks out in the public putting on masks way before the mask order rolled out yesterday, showing us most people care about their neighbor and doing the right thing. So I recommend you encourage people and support them and reward it, instead of, to a certain extent, it feels like you're punishing them. I firmly believe data can only be understood in the context of the whole truth. And, and I'm not, obviously, a health professional, so I'm not trying to speak to that. I'm trying to speak just to the numbers, according to the information that you've given us. So to, to reiterate, you mentioned that you believe infections. In our, in our town hall on Friday, started since January. So that means we've had two and a half months of full exposure. The total cases hit 47. So in context, out of 63,000 population in San Benito County, we've had a total infection of less than 1%, sixth, and 95% of those have recovered, which to emphasize, most of the media and state aren't emphasizing at all recovery rate, which by default creates skepticism and distrust. And also to ask the very important question, is it only the public health order that kept case count low, or the public doing the right thing, or both? Or maybe none of that? Maybe this virus is running its course on its own. At best, only assumptions can be made. Again, I'm not a health professional, but it definitely, it, it poses a lot of questions. So nonetheless, what can't be argued is the damage that public health guidelines have created, consequences that you nor this board can ignore. We're not even talking about these things. The conversation from you and other state leaders has been exclusive to how to stop this virus, ignoring the unintended consequences, which is the public health damage the shelter in place has and will create. Things like mental health issues. I received word from a local leader that they have kids on suicide watch, along with depression, anxiety, child abuse. I mean, ultimately forced poverty because of our intentional approach of crushing our economy. No matter how you look at it, that's not success. That, to me, is failure. What will happen to our government funding because of these decisions? That is also to ask the question, where does government money come from, when you realize government spending is just private sector spending orchestrated by politicians? That's the reality. To me, success requires us to talk about the question, how will a good response happen to protect public health and the economy? Because a strong economy isn't government handouts. Most would agree, a strong economy is good for public health. The two should never be considered apart from each other. Greater than the financial relief our government could ever offer is the freedom necessary afforded the true successful policymakers, that is, the businesses themselves, who would inform our discretion, us legislators, on how to pivot from their current model to something that could be considered safer and more robust. So in my discernment and dialogue, I ask the Board to consider making partners with the public and the business community, instead of peasants, as his current order does. I personally foresee a line of people in the business community getting ready to sue our county for these burdens their civil liberties just can't endure. In closing, this is, again, just, just my sentiment as a Board Supervisor, an individual. If we don't come up with exemption process, a risk assessment guideline, which I, I get it, you're definitely working on, but a subsequent immediate rollout of lifting the burden on those businesses before the shelter in place order end date May 4th, I would ask the Board for support ultimately to, to terminate our relationship with you. And that's how serious I feel about how much we've been ignoring a lot of questions, and, and this kind of off-the-side process, I don't feel is, is good for anybody, whether you think it's political or not. My, my last request is for any and all public health conversations be going forward, open discussion items, no more closed session stuff. I think the public needs to get a lot more engaged in this thing. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor Peter.
Put me a line, please.
Dr. Marty, do we like the response, or no?
Yeah, I hear what you, I, I heard what you said, and I, I appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you. These are my comments. My comments is, Doctor, you're the doctor in this group here, and, and we have said it in the past, and I know other supervisors said it in the past, that we follow your direction because you're the, you're the medical experts, and we're no doctors. But it sure, sure, sure sounded like we were doctors earlier. But that's not the point. The point is that, is that we have a balancing act between saving lives and saving local businesses. It is a very, very tough act that we are right now. I don't have the solution, I don't have the answers, because I'm not a medical doctor, but I do come from the business arena, and I could provide that, that type of information to the table. But we need your assistant doctors to guide us out of the situation that we are here today. I, I will support whatever you, you recommend with conduct, with, with conditions that we start opening up businesses. Our businesses are very important in our community, and we need to start opening up some of those businesses with, with guidelines and, and policies and procedures that could be done right, which will minimize the risk of the public. And, and I'll be honest, I don't know, I don't think opening up golf cars, golf, golf courses was the right thing to do, to do. I think, I think opening up construction or businesses that were, that would bring people back to work, probably would have been the better and smarter thing to do. But that's besides the point. That's water underneath the bridge, let's move forward. But I will support, one, whatever the recommendation comes from a doctor. Two, is start opening up to, to businesses in which there are procedures and policies in place, so we protect public safety. And three, allow businesses to start making economic activities. Those are, those are my comments. Dean, Tricia, D, I'm sorry. Do you still have any other presentations to make?
If, if our public health panel could, uh-
Not done yet. Jaime, I need, I want, I'm not done yet, Jaime.
That would be great.
Okay, hold on a minute. I think I have a supervisor wanting to respond.
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
You know, Peter, I respect your opinions, but I look at this, there is, there, there is definitely an issue here, or you would, you would be here right now. You're at home. So why aren't you here if it should be business as usual? That's my first question. And I agree with, I agree with-
Because I love-
Go ahead.
I could, I could respond to that.
Yes.
Okay, hold on, Supervisor Hernandez.
No, I want him to, I want, I want him to answer it, Jaime.
Okay, no, okay, I thought you had some more questions.
No, I'll, I'll go back after.
Yeah, well, and just as much as I'm at home, I'm just, I'm also in a, basically in a suit and tie, ready to represent my position as an elected official to ultimately speak and engage in this process and respect the rule of law. I love it. I honor it, just like I honor my constitution. I don't believe civil disobedience or, or ultimately trying to create your own way. So basically, I'm here because I respect the process, and just as much as the, the process was there for me to be involved, it also puts me in a position to, to, to hold everybody accountable, according to the public that voted me in. And if that wasn't true, then I also, you're right, Supervisor Medina, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the public that voted for me. That's my response.
No, I'm just saying you should be here at the office here, just like Supervisor Gilio and Supervisor Betello. But, you know, with everything that-
I'll go over there right now.
Yeah, if you want. The, you know, the question, the question that I have is, I agree with, with some of the stuff Peter is saying. Now, you know, terminating our agreement with Dr. Marty, because he's not giving an answer that we don't want, or that we want to hear, I should say, I, I can't see that. I look at it differently. I look at, we need to follow the state order, and that is an order from the state. We can be as close as we can, be, concur with that order, but we cannot be more lax. And am I correct in that, Legal Counsel? So I think what we need to do is, I'm just reiterating myself, or saying over and over again, is to go ahead and have that done, have it where we can do whatever the state order has said. And that's exactly what I said in the very beginning. So I just wanna make sure that Dr. Marty has the data. Dr. Marty is a scientist. Dr. Marty has looked at San Benito County, as Peter had said, San Benito County and not all the other, you know, Santa Clara, San Francisco, and everything else, when he is making his decisions. And that's, that is where, where I'm at, but I'm just, at this point in time, I could not even think about terminating the contract with him.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could add to, you know- Yeah, I thought Supervisor Hernandez's comments were very, very good, very well-thought, and, you know, expressing a, a, a level of our frustration that I think we, as a Board and, and the county, do have as far as dealing with this COVID-19 crisis. And we're trying to work through our best, our ability, dialoguing with each other, but where I think maybe emotions get a little bit out in front of us is, you know, to kinda express that last part of his discussion, as far as the, the work that we're having with, you know, our public health official, Dr. Marty. I think as Supervisor Medina stated is that, you know, he's probably given us information and answers and opinions that we, ourselves, most of us are in business, probably don't wanna hear right now. We know how our neighbors and our friends are, and our business community is hurting, and we're trying to work through that. I, I think if we start feeding on ourselves, we're getting in trouble. And, you know, we've been here for a long time. We know how hard it is to get professional people to work in a small county and bring that experience here. And I truly do appreciate that. I think the message that Supervisor Hernandez had is something that absolutely, we want not only- not only us internally to know, but that the public knows that we know. And that's why I really appreciated what he had to say and we're working on it. And I think Dr. Marty has heard that more than once from a number of us in the past few weeks. And, you know, things are a change. I think we have to work within, you know, the state order and that's where we're moving towards and I'm hoping that we get more businesses up and running. And the process, as we have talked about in different committee levels and dialoguing with our staff, is that it can't be a two-week process to open up a landscaping business if that's allowed in the state order. And so I think we have to kind of maintain our emotions and continue to work and express ourselves, what the public's expressing to us and kind of keep our cool heads. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez.
Mr. Chair, I have another comment.
Yes, Supervisor Hernandez.
Yes, so and, you know, hopefully with what you heard me share, I'm really trying to take a well-rounded approach. I do agree we have to protect public health. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But right now, it's at the expense of something else, the unintended consequences. Ultimately, there's going to be fallout that we are not talking about. And I, you know, I'm not speaking from two sides of my mouth. This whole time I've been basically pushing, let's protect the economy, let's protect the economy. There's a reason why in that Friday Town Hall, I was obviously chosen to talk ultimately to get the business element, worked really hard with the Chamber of Commerce to basically get a survey together to figure out what the impacts are. Because again, public health is also, you know, a good economy, a strong economy is good for public health. But as far as the idea that, hey, we're just trying to do what's, you know, we're not trying to violate the state order, I never said that at all. But ultimately, the conversation that I've had is there are other leaders across the state ultimately engaging this process and figuring out how to best maneuver it, again, still focused on protecting the public health. I mean, I had conversations with county council about Chico opening up barber shops. So it's already happening. So if we think we're leaders, I would disagree. I don't think we're leading at all. I think we're basically following. And again, these are just my individual comments. Because there are other counties that are following the state order, doing things that are basically opening things up because they are taking it more serious. No offense to anybody in the room, they are taking it more serious. If we were serious about protecting our economy, we wouldn't wait till four days before the order is supposed to basically end and then we say, oh, let's get this task force together. It's just to me, it's just, you know, in business, you're either growing or you're dying. That's just the reality. And if you're not engaging in it to figure out way ahead and plan ahead, my main point, we're failing. And that's just ultimately what's going on. We're not talking about, if we're going to address public health and we know there's going to be consequences, how do we make sure that we're a right lock-in step figuring out how to solve those consequences that we are creating? Because this is a government-induced shutdown and that is the reality. It's not trying to be a pundit or basically try to pull out bullets. It's just the reality. If we created this, now what are we going to do to solve it? Because right now, we're way behind and we're getting farther behind. I mean, we're getting more notices. I'm hearing my wife telling me about her work in the comp industry, getting notifications of companies shutting down. And we're not talking about any of this. So how much are we really leading? How much are we really trying to solve the issues of public health and the economy? I would say, I would disagree that we're doing any of that.
Thank you Supervisor Hernandez. Tracy, you want to continue with your presentation?
I'll defer to the public health staff. Mallory, are you ready to present?
We're going to test this. Hi, this is Lynn, Deputy Director. And we know that the board had posed some questions regarding epidemiology, like about doubling rates and crude case rates. And I want to say that this information is available on our website, on the daily data report. We expanded the data report last week to include this kind of information. And for the public, I just want to talk a little bit about epidemiology. It's sort of a specialized field. Epidemiologists study outbreaks of diseases, the causes and the locations and how the communities are affected. And they use this information to prevent future outbreaks and spread of disease. And they keep us informed of how to structure our work around outbreaks and communicable diseases. And so with that, I'll just go ahead and let Mallory talk about the questions of doubling and crude case rates.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, Mallory, go ahead, we can hear you.
So I just wanted to kind of cover possibly some things that haven't already been mentioned just because I know we've spent a lot of time here already and I want to keep from running around in circles. So... Sorry, just waiting for stuff to populate here. So there on the screen we're showing is the update that we provide regularly Monday through Friday. It gives us an idea of case count where you can just see how many new cases we have populating each day. Shows us about, you know, test results. And as Dr. Marty pointed out, you know, these test results are basically a moment in time that people are being tested. So just under like 2% of our population in total has been tested so far. And those, you know, that have been tested, 5.2% of them have been positive of those that are tested. So I just wanted to point that out. So there's definitely room for expansion of testing, which would be crucial for sort of us to do our job and implement the work that we need to do. And what else do we want to point out here? We do have patient age range because that's sort of been a focus on some of, you know, the worse effects of this virus. Anyway, we have that data up there. And then the second page, which is newer, we just added that last week, gives us some demographics that we want to look at. And I did want to briefly talk about our county comparisons, just because one of the supervisors had sort of pointed that out, that, you know, we're not Santa Clara County and certainly we're not geographically or, you know, but there is a lot of fluid dynamics happening here between our counties. We have 60% or just under 60% now of our cases that work outside of San Benito County in, you know, our three most neighboring counties. And 75% of those cases of those positives that work outside of the county are in Santa Clara County. So that is why we do sort of look at Santa Clara in such an important way, if you want to say, because so many of our cases and our, you know, patients, our people work there. So it is an important factor in what we do here in San Benito. Another thing I wanted to point out about these comparisons is our case rate. So we actually have the second highest case rate between our four counties, Santa Clara being the highest. So that's something else that I just kind of wanted to look at. And also we have, okay, lastly, I'll touch on this. That exposure source graph shows sort of the, you know, dramatic decrease in community transmission that occurred once we did put that shelter in place in order. And that's just important to see visually, to remind people, yeah, the shelter in place worked and I know we have a lot of work going forward and we will, you know, address all those things soon, very soon, if not today. So I think that's all I wanted to say right now. There were a couple of things that were asked of me, like doubling time. And as Dr. Marty had said, we do have pretty small numbers. And with that, it can be really hard to give informative variability with such small numbers and the doubling time. But I do have estimates of our doubling time figures for our county, both before the shelter in place and after shelter in place, because they're two pretty significantly different doubling times. So it's really hard for me to put all that data into one document. But yeah, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Mallory. And then there was another question from one of the board members about a hospital surge plan. And I don't know if you can bring that up, Mike? No? Okay. So we worked with the hospital to devise a system that's like, it's a yellow, it's a green, yellow, red system. And right now, the hospital is in the green and it's based on the number, you know, the number of beds that are occupied and their staffing. And we get a daily census report on what's happening at the hospital. And then that report is also provided to the state. And the state compiles a report for the whole state of California and the surge capacity for all the counties and different regions as well. And we do have an alternate care site location, which an alternate care site would be something like a field hospital. So we do have an agreement and a location. And we are also having conversations with Santa Cruz County about overflow in the event that, you know, we can't get what we need for our alternate care site. We have Dr. Gilarducci, who is the Medical Director of OES. And he's also the medical, in our county, and he's also the Medical Director in Santa Cruz County. And so we've been working with him and Dr. Gail Newell, who's the Health Officer over in Santa Cruz County, and having conversations with them about sort of our regional overflow capacity. And I hope that answers the questions that were posed to us by the board.
Thank you. Tracy?
I think that was all the information that we were prepared to provide. I would just defer to the board now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Looks like a lot of public comment, hands raised. Mr. Chair, just want to point that out so we don't miss him. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'm going to go to public comments. Dusik, do we have any speaker cards?
If you wish to make a comment, please press star nine or raise your hand. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak. Hunter?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hunter Cunio, resident of San Benito County. I was going to spend some time going over the protocol that I would be using May fourth when we lift the shelter in place, sharing the protocol I'll be using as a fitness professional to ensure the safety of my clients. But at this point, I just want to encourage all of you to fire this health officer if he extends the shelter in place today for negligence and copying and pasting orders coming from surrounding counties and not by the facts as they are here in San Benito County. A health officer is not qualified to weigh these medically-based decisions against the consequences they have on other areas of our lives, such as mass unemployment and the devastation it will cause for years. Further, I'm encouraging you, our supervisors, to defy these immoral unconstitutional orders coming from the state level. I was told by a supervisor that you can't do these things because, quote, "This isn't the Wild West." But this is like the Wild West right now with 3% of our prison population being released into the streets while peaceful citizens going out to try and work and eat are being threatened with arrests without any penal code or health and safety code available to cite. Our Bill of Rights, our constitutional law of the land being made null and void. We are being governed right now by an hysterical, emotional mob, not by rational-thinking men. The most apocalyptic sci-fi novel couldn't imagine a darker closeness, a creation of a society in constant fear, suspicious of others, scared that in any moment they will be infected with a deadly virus, teaching children that if they go play it apart or go out in public, they may be guilty of infecting and killing their grandparents, neighbors, snitching on neighbors, business owners looking over their shoulders, nervous about trying to do honest work and feed their families. Your lack of leadership is contributing to this hell on earth. Who's willing to live like this in order to be spared the small risk of being seriously harmed by a virus? Every day we live like this, the trajectory of our lives changes. Opportunities, dreams, aspirations being robbed from our youth. Myself and many others I've talked to aren't going to live like this anymore. We will refuse and resist. If you don't fire this health officer and defy these orders, you are all being complicit in the greatest heist ever committed against our people and it won't be forgotten. I'm a private guy, just wanted to make his living, serve others and raise a family. I do vote, but I don't normally engage in political activism. But I'll tell you, you have woken a line and I'm going to keep grinding this axe long after this is, quote, "over with." So I encourage you to lead today, not by emotion and hysteria, but by your God-given reason and intellect. Lead like mid.
Thank you. Next speaker card.
Mary, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Mary Shaw Coron. I live in San Benito County. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Madam.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to speak in support of our health officials, Dr. Marty and also Lynn Mello and her staff and Tracy. I feel like they're being unfairly attacked. I, as a member of the public, I'm over 60, appreciate what they're doing and I totally understand that the businesses are suffering. I think what would be more helpful is, instead of these attacks, I had actually a suggestion, which is that perhaps our health officials could convene meetings, maybe using Zoom, with specific sectors of our economy that they wish to open. For example, I think I heard mentioned gardeners, landscapers, construction, real estate, et cetera. Maybe there could be a first phase set of Zoom meetings with these businesses to discuss best practices, guidelines, to get input from the businesses or potential customers who have suggestions. Because I personally was, you know, there's a lot of comments about how we're not like neighboring counties. I happen to bank in Watsonville, which is in Santa Cruz County, and I was there yesterday. And the bank had a very specific protocol. Maybe it's already happening in San Benito County. And everyone had a mask on and they have lower rates, as someone pointed out, of infection than we do. I think it's 3% or so. But they seem to all have masks on. You know, I had been outside to a bank for a while and I was struck by the fact that, you know, there was a line outside. I think our banks are doing this too. I'm just saying that these types of protocols can be set up where it's, they had a piece of Plexiglas, you know, at the place where we spoke to the person, the loan officer. And so they had all these different, you know, requirements. And I'm sure these best practices could be extended to other businesses. So I'm just suggesting that there be Zoom meetings with businesses and consumers, customers, to discuss what would be the best way forward instead of attacking the health officials. I think that would be more constructive. Thank you very much.
I have to get on too. This is Andy Shaw.
Oh, we're sharing the same. Let's wait.
How do you want to do it?
I apologize, only one per person. Thank you. Next speaker card.
Rob, please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Rob Benoski. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I have to say thank you very much for having this special meeting. You truly are showing leadership as a board in both the discussion with the people in the know and allowing the public to join in. That said, I can't let this go without saying, I do not believe that anybody should attack anyone, especially a fellow supervisor, just because that... especially a fellow supervisor, just because that supervisor is not there physically. I'm not there physically either, and that's because I didn't know I could be there physically. But we did give elected officials and individuals the option. And just because they are not there, they should not be berated for it at all, in my opinion. My main point is, though, after some time, the people with a capital P, they can gauge the danger and can sense when things may be going over the top. And my read on the public is, a great deal of people do feel that we are now over the top in some of the restrictions. My second point is that, you know, it's my guess, and it's probably a pretty educated guess, that most of the people making the decisions that have decimated our economy have no direct, day-to-day financial consequence to their decisions. And that is somewhat offensive to me. Because if I'm a business owner, or, you know, I can't hide the fact I'm a school board member, you know, tonight, we're deciding whether to lay off 20 people or not, or 21 people or not. That's a direct consequence to the actions that other officials have made. My third and final point, people will absolutely take risks when it comes to feeding the families, providing shelter, and not living under tyranny. Our country was founded on that principle. So please use your pick-and-choose powers very carefully. I'm listening to the discussion here, and we're picking and choosing what businesses can open and what have to stay closed. Again, do not underestimate how our economy has been decimated. Families and their businesses will be destroyed as a result of the decisions like you make. And I just urge you to take that into account. Responding immediately the way we did, good. But now that we know so much more, is anybody actually thinking about what the trade-off was? Destroying people's livelihoods? I thank you very much for letting me speak my mind here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Matt, please state your name for the record.
Yes? Hi, thank you so much, supervisors. I know the great sacrifices you make to take on this mantle, and I appreciate all of you very much. My name is Matt Kirkland. I am from San Benito County. I'm a pastor in the county. And I wanted to speak on mental health just for a moment. And I know that many of you have probably heard the statistic that in the last six weeks, our suicide hotlines have increased by 40%. That's a huge spike. Not only are we unaware of the statistics, anecdotally, even within my congregation, again, here in Hollister, we have people that are, we had a young gal that, just praise God, she was able to come forward expressing her fears of wanting to commit suicide, and she was able to get some help. But all of this is being exacerbated by this current stay-in-place order. I believe strongly that the stay-in-place order, while it was effective for the short term, it is not a long-term solution. I think that most of the supervisors agree. I appreciate everything that I'm hearing today. And if I heard correctly, I think I was reading between the lines that Dr. Marty was implying that he will not extend the stay-in-place order if the state does not, starting next Monday. And I would encourage us, as we consider more than just the numbers on a piece of paper, that we understand the long-term effect of the mental health of our community and how that mental health will change for the better because we are designed to be people that connect with one another. And this whole idea of social distancing, I think, is terrible. I agree with physical distancing during the short run, but emotional distancing is not what we are created beings to be like. So thank you so much for your hard work. I encourage you to stand strong. God bless you and your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I appreciate the time to speak. I wanted to make note that I have emailed Dr. Marty on April 21st at 9:18 a.m., April 23rd at 7:49 a.m. I wanted to specifically discuss the essential services that my business provides to this community. I own a yoga studio here. I shared and asked questions about scientific studies that have confirmed the many mental and physical benefits of yoga. It decreases stress, relieves anxiety, reduces inflammation, improves heart health, fights depression, improves sleep quality, improves the overall quality of life. I also have a hot yoga addition to my business, which detoxes the body, improves the immune system function, increases circulation. It helps with weight loss. It provides a cardiovascular boost. I could go on and on about the benefits that my business provides to this community. My emails were not answered. I've also asked specific questions in regards, long before this mask mandate came out, to follow the directive to prepare, about the bacterial infection and overheating, mandating people to wear masks in my business. I feel that that is a hazard to their health, and I don't feel comfortable taking the liability. I am also concerned of the health and wellness of my community. I've been holding virtual classes since March 17th. That's 42 days. It has been 93 days since our first case in San Benito County. I am completely confused, and I have tons of questions in related to what is essential. I did some research about alcohol, and it's the third-leading cause of death here in this country, alcohol death. And why is that essential? Since when do we not have choice to take risks? The doctor spoke of "construction." That was the first word out of his mouth when we talked about, when he answered Mr. Medina's question in regards to what can we talk about opening? And his first response was "construction." How is that essential? In regards to mask mandates, "An emergency is a serious, unexpected, and dangerous situation requiring immediate action." 93 days since our first case, we're mask mandating. That does not qualify, in my opinion, as an emergency. I also wanted to caution the doctor with his restrictions and that if anyone is detained because of this, he's required to have...
Madam, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Actually, madam, can you state your name so we can make sure that we respond back to your comments about our doctor?
Absolutely. My name is Courtney Evans, and I own Kamal Yoga Studio here in town.
Thank you, madam. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, this is Haley Thompson, CrossFit San Benito. Can you hear me?
Yes, madam.
Okay. Also, my partner, Daniel Atencio, is with me here. Whether you believe in furthering the shelter in place or not, let's not ignore the looming economic crisis that we have. We're one of 40 businesses that you have deemed nonessential. Essential businesses, another topic. I mean, we could go on forever debating that. But as you know, this is a health, just as Courtney spoke, fitness is very essential to the immune system in fighting off any sort of virus that we might come across. So whether it's a mental, physical, nutritional, I believe that you guys need to consider the gyms, some of these fitness studios as essential businesses, or even just allowing us to have moral, like moral obligations to show you our plan to concede to this and to help keep everybody safe while opening our business. We have been closed, what, since the 17th? We've lost membership. We're having difficulty keeping our business open. There's no SBA loans for us in our type of business. We haven't received any unemployment benefits. We offer virtual classes as well. We reach out socially and the media. We encourage healthy habits, nutrition, fitness, et cetera. You know, we talk about the mental side of things to our people. But with all this said, this is not enough. People need to see people. We strongly feel businesses with proper safety plans should be encouraged and allowed to open back up. We have a safety plan in place. We have plenty of space. We have over 12-by-14 lanes for each individual athlete. We have cleaning in that lane. We have all the equipment required. They don't need to travel anywhere further than their own lane. You know, we have, I'm sure there's other fitness studios that can speak to this, that they have plans in place that we can be open and stay safe. So although our community, you know, community is a large part of CrossFit, we, you know, improvise, and we are willing to improvise to keep people safe. But for now, you know, there'll be no socializing after or before the classes. But we strongly believe in reopening our business and hope that you guys will consider ours and other industry out there that have these plans in place and not just close the doors on us and say goodbye to your small business in your community. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker. Question?
Yeah, my name is Adam Nanini, and I'm a resident of Hollister. I agree with the previous speakers regarding what's being done to the working people in our county and the country and that they're being prevented from earning a living. Their livelihoods are being destroyed, and it's a terrible injustice. But I would like to specifically address the matter of our freedom of religion, which hasn't been addressed, as far as I know. So we're raised in this country as, from childhood, knowing that freedom of religion is a foundational aspect of what makes this country what it is. Protected by the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution protects us against the federal government. Article 1, Section 4 of the California Constitution protects us from the state government. And when it states that we have the free exercise of religion is guaranteed. Now, this isn't talking about sitting at home with a Bible or watching something on TV. This is talking about the public practice of religion shall not be infringed upon. And right now, what we've got going on is the governor and the health officer of our county are saying that we are forbidden from publicly gathering. They don't need to go out and say as much, but they say, I believe our state, our county order says prohibits all nonessential gatherings of any number of individuals, which is not explicit, but implicit, meaning our churches. Now, I believe that our pastors and our clergy care much more about their own people than any elected officials or unelected officials. And they will do what is right to protect their congregations and their parishioners. For example, we have the bishop of the Diocese of Monterey has made it clear to Catholics that we're not obliged to attend Mass during this time, okay? It's a whole nother thing for the government, local government, state government, to tell us we are forbidden from attending church. So I've heard some things today about how we're waiting for, to see what Sacramento has to say. We're waiting on this. We're waiting to see if these numbers change. I want to know, and I call upon our supervisors and our elected officials, I want to know if you're going to rectify this and inform the people of our county specifically that they are free to exercise their right to publicly practice their religion, regardless of what Sacramento and our unelected health officials have to say about it. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi.
Hello.
This is Zadana with RE/MAX. And first of all, I wanted to thank the first caller who spoke. I'm not sure if it was Cuneo or not, but ditto, he was very articulate. I wanted to also thank Supervisor Hernandez for his, for him articulating the freedoms that we should all be experiencing right now. And then also, I don't need to reiterate everything they said. They did a great job. I think what you need to do is trust your people and let them mitigate and take care of other people and get open. We need to have an economy for people to go back to, number one. And then number two, wanted to let you know the chat function was turned off about 15 minutes ago. And I am told by one of the supervisors via social media that it was never supposed to be on. Is this true?
What response to your question after your three minutes is up?
I'm done.
You're done? Okay. Thank you. Next speaker card.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
This is Andy Shah Coran. First of all, I was a little disturbed by Mr. Supervisor Hernandez's comments about elected officials versus public servants who are not elected. My sense is that a lot of our elected officials, frankly, don't respond very well to what the public thinks. You know, an example would be the issue that's in closed session. Only one of your supervisors, Jaime de la Cruz, actually cared that 60% of the public had expressed themselves. And instead, they've taken their opportunity to basically call the public stupid and ignorant rather than actually respect their will. But let's get back down to what the doctor says. And I'm a biologist. I'm a graduate of the University of California. And frankly, I think that our unelected doctor is doing a hell of a good job thinking about how to protect the people in this county. The larger issue is, we don't want to end up like I watched my, you know, my mom lived in New York City, and she had to leave there because frankly, people are being put in mass graves because they didn't move forward quick enough in figuring out how to keep people safe. And the concern that I have is that with all the many asymptomatic, especially young people, that we're going to see the coronavirus come storming back in the winter season with many, many people, especially older people, as victims. And frankly, I think the issue is not how we protect our business community because there will be major efforts by the state and the federal level to figure out how to get the economy moving, just like we had in the great... The bigger issue is that we make sure that our people are not devastated where we're having family members die. I've already had a number of close family members who were admittedly elderly, but they were in good health and have passed away. And I can tell you, for our community, it would be devastating to unnecessarily have people pass away. I think we need to add some trust in the folks that actually know something about this crisis, and that would include our doctors and our nurses. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello, this is, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Manuel Castro. I own Moment Flower Shop there in Hollister, San Benito County, and also an agro-supply company out in Santa Cruz County. I travel between both counties, and I've seen, my, first, I want to give my respects to what Hernandez had said in regards to the supporting the business. He has been active. We've been on numerous conversations throughout the community, and we've had some private conversations. And I do respect what he's trying to get across as a point for the businesses and the economical standpoint of Hollister as a city and San Benito County. I have, all I have to add is that I do support the doctor and what his reasoning behind with the shelter in place, but it placed officially on March 17th. But we do have to start looking at the economical standpoint for the county and start looking at prioritizing the businesses that are deemed nonessential and looking at which ones should start opening up based on the, you know, the importance of their business. I mean, yeah, we can get down to the specifics of, yeah, alcohol is, you know, is considered essential, but, you know, it hurts our human bodies and so on and so forth on the ethical standpoint. But let's look at each business, you know, and start... But let's look at each business, uh, you know, and start looking at not work or not only as if they should open up, but what processes they should be putting in place to open up uh, by industry. I mean, let's look at restaurants, uh, for instance, uh, you know, we are all using them. They've been active, but let's look at what, what tailors with the restaurants and, and if, you know, if, if it's important for them to open up, should we open up bars? I know Peter doesn't want to hear this, uh, loud, Peter Lago from Johnny's, but you know, we have to look at if, if all our businesses are important before we look at that. I, and, and I support Peter Lago in his business, I, you know, uh, and because we, I, I feel that we all business owners need to get back to doing business. But let's bring this back to basics. Let's look at every business as a whole and, 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 and start uh, making a protocol to be safe for our customers, for our, for our environment, for our economy as well. Uh, so I, I support the doctor in his decision initially. I'm supporting Peter uh, now, as, as I've always supported Peter. Uh, but I support him in the sense of, let's start looking at each business before we say, no, we're not going to open up non-essential business. Let's start opening up those gates and saying, okay, how are you going to function in your business when we start uh, doing business and say, and see if it's important or not, you know? Uh, I, I believe that we need to open, we've got to slowly open up a faucet uh, into our economy and, and uh, start doing business again, you know? Uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Shannon, if you please state your name.
Hello? 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 Hello, yes, yes, madam.
I just wanted to make her ask that if actually this, this could be open, we usually go to the financial services, including insurance, real estate, and those. We are able to push a distance within, within our, as our clients, um, on an individual basis. It's similar to experience that pulls the grass, they have a little more person in and a tie. If needed, but we do have middle uh, check with the public. The comment was that we do need to get our, our back for our county and um, work on getting this, this agreement um, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Next speaker.
Patrick, if you could please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little?
Patrick?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So, well, so I'd like to go to the, to the numbers in the county. I believe we have uh, what, fifty cases as, as was stated earlier. Um, and also the um, uh, the other speaker said that most of those cases are from Santa Clara County and that's why we're following Santa Clara County. And, and that's fine if we want to go that way. But then let's look at the numbers that Stanford put out, that there's probably eighty times more people infected in Santa Clara County. And let's just be uh, conservative in that number for Santa Benito County. Um, we've had two deaths, which is tragic. Any death is tragic. Uh, we have nobody in hospital right now. But if we have even two times or three times the cases that we don't know about in this county, where are all the serious cases then? Because you can't have it both ways and say that it's a much more widespread problem and that it's a super serious disease, but there's no serious cases in the hospital. Um, it's on its head. We need to look at different data. The Dr. Stevens needs to get off the tunnel vision and start looking at different data. Um, this is probably less lethal than the flu, uh, when this is all said and done. Um, it's at least not what they projected it to be in the beginning of this shutdown. Uh, we need to, to adapt to it. We need to start opening these businesses. Um, the health of the community is going to go far worse than this COVID is ever going to push it. Um, and, and also I'd like to say that um, as far as our due process rights, they've been depleted because of the uh, health officer uh, closing the uh, government offices in the courthouse. So um, we haven't been able to get any relief from a judge or um, anything like that from court, um, which is also um, impeding our constitutional rights under the United States Constitution. Uh, and I'll leave it at that. Uh, but we do need to look at the numbers. If we have much bigger numbers in this county, where are the serious cases then? And thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more public comments.
No more public comments?
But we, never mind.
We have one more?
We have one more. Cody?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Cody Dalton. Um, I work for Golden Eagle Mortgage here in town and we are an essential business. However, just the effects um, and the trickle down from all the other businesses here in town non, not being essential has impacted us tremendously. Um, we're just not seeing as many people coming in and, you know, doing certain things just because there's really no economy right now. It's shut down. Um, I just, to me, I wish that there were more testing. I know that that's something that's coming out. Um, but I would like to see something in place where there's going to be more testing to truly see those statistics kind of form, um, you know, and, and, and really know what the statistics are because we don't have that right now. Um, and it's kind of hard for you guys to make an educated decision on what to do if we don't know what those statistics are. Um, but you know, the economy needs to come back alive and people need to be able to start making money. Um, and we need to open up these businesses because it's not just the small businesses and you know, the things that are being impacted here locally, but we are a bedroom community and you know, there's a lot of people here that can't even get unemployment, you know, based on where they're at and the type of business that they have. It's just not being offered for some people in certain circumstances. And I think that that's something that you guys definitely need to um, you know, have more education on and you know, have that open line of communication with the community and try and figure out a solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, Ariel?
Hello? Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Uh, my name's Ariel Hurtado. I'm a medical doctor. I specialize in anesthesia and pain management. I just wanted to talk to you guys about some of the facts I hear. And um, I wanted to demystify a lot of science because I would like us to focus more on science and not on hysteria. So I'm, I don't have an opinion other than to give you some facts. Number one, a coronavirus is a cause of seasonal colds. It spreads like a cold because it is a cold. Number two, once you get a viral infection of any type, you can't get it again from the same strain. That is why the cold has never been cured. It mutates every year into another form and vaccines can take up to two years to develop safely. Number three, our immune system makes its own vaccine, but we call them antibody and they protect us for the rest of our lives from that specific virus. Four, colds and flus decrease in the summer. Why? Because UV light from the sun will kill the virus within two minutes. Same thing that causes sunburns. The worst thing you can do is have people shelter inside where they're breathing the same stale air and artificial light. Number five, quarantines are meant for sick people, not healthy people. We've never done this in the history of the world. Social distancing, masks and gloves have never been proven to be scientifically beneficial. Six, our goal should be herd immunity, which occurs when over two-thirds of the population has been exposed and the virus can no longer jump from person to person. Seven is examples, Sweden did not close down their country. They recommended some guidelines for safety and they did not overwhelm their hospital system, which was the original goal. They are on track to reach herd immunity. Eight, the number of people who have had the infection is fifty times higher according to credible studies from Stanford and USC. Nine, the death rate that we hear in the media is falsely elevated because hospitals have been labeling all deaths as COVID regardless of whether it was the cause or was just present when the person died of another cause. When you do the proper calculations, the death rate is much, much lower in the range of point zero two to point zero four. And unfortunately, doctors and uh, the medical establishment use ventilators, which ended up killing more people than they helped. We now know this is the wrong strategy. That is why you have a surplus of ventilators. Eleven, New York is twenty times as many people per square mile as Hollister. They don't have sunlight because of tall buildings and they have polluted air. The two biggest risk factors for the disease according to the University of Maryland are your home where you reside and public transportation. Twelve, the rates will continue to drop now and pick up in November when the weather changes. Right now is the lowest risk time to relax restrictions, which will not overwhelm our healthcare and will help us build immunity. President FDR said, the only thing you have to fear is fear itself. If you've ever been confused about what this means, just look around in our environment. This fear is being created by politicians and media, which are not interpreting science correctly. More medical doctors and professionals are going to start standing up and pointing this out. There's science, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Hi, I'm Dana Mills. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um, I've had a hair salon here in Hollister for thirty-plus years. That's now um, deemed non-essential, um, but it is very essential to my family. Uh, my concern and question is how much safer is it for colleagues of mine to be going into people's homes doing their hair or cutting them in their garages or meeting them on, on the sly? Um, I would follow parameters. We already are, we already regulated by our state board for the parameters that we have to do in our salons. So I would just like to open up and set up parameters and be able to continue to work. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Do we have any other speakers?
We, yes, we do. Heather, if you could please unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um, my name is Heather Casada. Um, I own my own business here in town. I do hair. Um, I just wanted to say that I agree with Dana. Um, we are all deemed non-essential, um, and that's very hard for our families because like she said, we are essential to our families. Um, I myself and my husband have not spent working. Um, no paychecks have come in. And I think that for us small business owners, as far as that goes, we can um, all start in a way uh, of protecting ourselves and our clients and doing it in a safe manner. And I think we should all start opening up because eventually I think people are going to start getting sick of it and defying it and it's going to be worse in the long run. So I just wanted to say um, thank you guys for doing this today and listening, everybody. And um, hopefully we can all come together and just do this sooner than later because I, I, it's, it's very sad for all these poor people who are just losing out and I myself might have to be one of those that shuts my door as well if this goes on any longer. So, um, and I also wanted to say too, um, the studios, you know, my girlfriend, Body Aid, everybody there, it's very depressing not being able to go and work out with our family and we are family there. And I think that they definitely are essential and they're essential for mental health for sure. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
We do not have any more public comments.
Okay, I'm going to close public hearing, take it back to the board. But before I take it back to the board, um, Janet or, or the clerk, can I answer a question that someone from the public said, why is the chat comment section closed?
Yeah, I'll invite up Dulce Alonso for that.
Hi, board. Um, so typically during public me, board meetings, we disable the chat function and we allow the public to engage by uh, doing the public comment via Zoom by raising their hand. And um, we allow the public to participate during public comment that way. So um, it, we were getting not questions, but comments um, being posted on there. So we, we disable that feature so that the host could focus on, on the panelists.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, comments with the board?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, um, in closing, uh, while even actually in reference to what uh, our, our management analyst, Dulce Alonso, mentioned, I appreciate the intentions. I don't agree with it. I, I, I think there's wisdom in just listening to the public, even if it's ranting, even if we don't like it. And I get it, it's, I mean, ultimately, it's not impacting the dialogue of the actual discussion, the book, the, the audio discussion. It's, it's nothing but people basically interjecting. I feel one, I've definitely learned even as a business owner is, is a lot of the times the best solutions that I produce come from the very people that I serve, which is my customers. And I think in that same context, as uh, um, as elected officials, we need to be able to open up the floodgates of co, of conversation, to get down to a consensus, to calm the folks, to encourage them to a way of unity and discourage obviously hopelessness and ultimately this frustration that you're sensing and, and I don't have to speak to that too much. Um, my other comment is, is when it comes down to, to uh, trying to start up our economy, it's just to a certain extent that that's why I think this drastic element has created such a negative impact because it really has been drastic. No business just wakes up one day and says, oh, I'm going to start a business and you have everything in place to be successful. It takes time, takes effort, takes failure, takes success. And all of a sudden, you learn and you grow and you eventually develop a model that works and that obviously your customers uh, enjoy. And that's why they, that's why you're still open because they basically deem you essential. But to that point, we've done basically this, to a certain extent, it's like surgery, right? We've cut in to the economy and pretty much slashed it and now we're trying to stop the bleeding and it's hemorrhaging and now uh, we don't have a solution for it and we're trying to, you know, saying, hey, we're trying to address another issue, but we do believe in stopping the bleeding, but we're just not going to get to it right now. Um, my point with those comments is as things start to consider withdrawing, this is why exactly, to reiterate the element that when we have a game plan and again, trying to protect the public health, trying to uh, to respect the order of the state, we have a plan that ultimately implements success or long before we make the decision to shut people down, uh, and then open them back up again, we should have had the solution. The fact that we're so behind, we're hemorrhaging and it's going to be me, you and the rest of the board ultimately, that are going to be remembered for this, this day and age that we made these decisions. We will be remembered and I, I firmly believe it's not going to be because of the, the impacts of this virus. It's because of a decision-making in the impacts of this virus. And that's not, um, trying to throw out, uh, again, it's subjective. It's, it's, I just believe that the, the impacts of the economy are going to be much greater than the impacts of this virus. Again, that's my individual assumption. I don't have to speak to the, to medical uh, elements. There was a doctor that was actually pretty, pretty uh, clear and concise as far as that element that he could, he spoke to earlier. Um, and then my, my last comment to the board is just realize that I'm very much about trying to support the doctor and uh, his guidelines, right? I agreed to the March eighteenth order. Uh, but to be clear, there was a question asked of why am I not there? And this is not to defend myself, this is just the reality of, I respected his guideline and that's why I'm here because according to his guideline, social distancing is your number one for protecting public health. And then number two is showing up and wearing a mask. So you know, again, this is just to point out the reality is that I'm actually honoring his guidelines and not dishonoring them. But again, now we need a solution on how to roll out our economy. It's, it's, you know, whether we like it or not, it's going to bubble over and there's going to be repercussions. And at that point, it's going to be hemorrhaging from all angles and we're not going to be able to catch up. So I would urge the board to act now and not waste any more time in loosening these regulations uh, in a process that's in a manner that would be uh, not only expedient, but uh, effective at protecting public health. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so short of making a motion because this is more informational, what is it that you would like to say past November third? I'm sorry, May third?
November third, you're thinking about the election already, huh?
Yeah, May third, sorry about that, I apologize.
Um, so uh, my, I, my recommendations is what I mentioned in my earlier statement is let's do risk guidelines, let's engage the elected officials that it's their duty to educate, to be educated, just as, as much as they are educators in that sense, once they understand this world, that we get educated on how to roll this out and to create a process where you actually have, you know, someone from business. I mean, I, I, you know, I've been in this short term, granted, it's been my second year. Uh, but I've been in it long enough to realize that there's a lot of different things that really don't work and uh, joint powers or JPAs are one of those elements that I think create a lot of issues. And I'm only referencing that as an example because when you try to, to certain- And I'm only referencing that as an example because when you try to, to a certain extent, make it very easy to make a decision, you separate the authority of each individual jurisdiction and you basically cut and paste a supposed assumptive response to the public. And then all of a sudden, if you have a game plan to push that forward, then it's very easy. So I don't agree, my bottom line is I don't agree with trying to basically separate the legislative process, which is us, the elected officials, from the decision-making, from the engagement with the business community. But I do agree, we need to create a very accountable task force. That's why, again, trying to encourage accountability in the process, not discourage it, that we be involved in this process and ultimately that we start to, any gray area that the state order doesn't address, they're obviously saying, we don't know. And because we don't know, we're just waiting and seeing. I don't think that's success. So I think the board should enact on that gray area and start to come up with solutions ourselves. Again, we were elected to be decision-makers and ultimately problem solvers. So if we're not going to be engaged in how to solve our own problems, I think that's where we're starting to fail. So if we can now start talking about what that means and ultimately start to get these conversations going right away and then start to open up businesses according to risk is my main, is my last point. Is let's assume risk, right? We want to try to protect the public health, protect folks that are, you know, the folks that are basically a lot more susceptible to this thing. Then we talk about that, but then we start to create, to a certain extent, based off of an exemption process. We create a process that allows a business to apply and ultimately create a safety plan, show us that safety plan. Then we could look at that safety plan and then look at implementing that safety plan. According to the guidelines, yes, with a doctor, but just the same, making sure that we're not stalling, that we're ultimately, if that person, that business can create solutions and they're according to the current standard, then there's no point where we can't say no, whether you're essential, non-essential. If the gray area exists, let's just let these businesses open up.
Thank you for your enthusiasm. We really do appreciate it. And that nutshell, you will support a task force or committee of the elected officials to see how we can loosen up and which business industrial can or are in the best interest to open up, correct? And there's guidelines, there's a plank that will be filled as time moves on. Is that correct in your position?
Yes, and the last point is if we do it with an expectation of a date, we say, this is when we're going to do it and this is when we're going to have that game plan ready to go and have businesses start applying, not wait and see.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Patel?
Well, I don't disagree with any of that. I think we really need to start opening up our businesses in the state. And, you know, one of the things that I, you know, have to reiterate, you know, San Bernardino County is a subdivision of the state. We have to follow state law and guidelines at the bare minimum and that's what we do. I think some of us on the board have been advocating that our, to modify our order, shelter in place to the state standard at the bare, at the maximum. Because that's what we're obligated to do and no more, no less. You know, I think a lot of this is testified by the public. I agree with, especially with the number of cases and intensity of this disease. As it turned out, is a lot more overblown than, especially here in our county, but throughout the whole country, if you do the math, it just doesn't size up. And now that we're going into a period of not the cold season or flu season and herd mentality, herd immunity. And we got to be prepared to allow these businesses to open as quickly as they possibly can. You know, I'm very sympathetic to a lot of the mom and pop businesses, the hair cutters and floor shops, that downtown people that have been closed and the struggles, the people that work for them, the restaurant businesses. I, you know, how does that all come back? I'm not even sure, but every day that is, it's delayed is another day that I think some will not come back. And it's a be, it's more of an economic emergency now than a health emergency to me anyway. That's just how I feel about it, but.
Supervisor Patel, you're pretty much aligned with Supervisor Hernandez.
I'm very much in line with him. I, you know, I think from what we've seen here, I think the pain is more economic than health-wise and I'm very much in line with him. But we need to develop a local plan that the minute that we could go forward, and we have made some strides this past week with this face mask covering order. I didn't like it. I still don't like it, but I'm here wearing my face mask and everybody here is wearing their face mask and we're complying with it. But we also have to start looking for ways to get back on our feet. And we got to do that quickly.
Okay. Okay, Supervisor Medina?
About an hour and a half ago, I said I would like to concur with the state order, not be more stringent than the state. And I will continue to live by those words.
Okay, how about the concept of creating a committee of elected officials to start addressing, how to open up local industrial?
Mr. Chair, if I could address that question?
Hold on, Barbara, hold on.
I believe we should have two officials and I would recommend, well, I'm not making, I do not want to be involved in that one. I think it should be Anthony and either Peter or yourself. That's my wish. I can be completely, you know, overridden by my colleagues, but I think Peter has a good grasp on it and Anthony has a good grasp on it. That's my wish.
Okay, thank you. All right, Barbara, do you want to respond to that?
Oh, no. I just wanted to point out that if it's anything less than a subcommittee of two members of the board supervisors, it would be a Brown Act and that includes if you create a task force directly by the board. If a task force was created solely by the public health officer on his discretion, that it would not be a Brown Act committee.
Okay, just to bring the board up to breath and other developments, there is, there are, there is a committee that meets on Fridays and that's the chairman of the board and the vice chair, which happens to be Jim Gilio, myself, that also includes other members, other elected officials, such as the mayor of City Hollister, the mayor of San Juan Batista and some of their city council members. And also the Cali, La Montoya and School Districts, that has been going very successful. In fact, we're planning on having a meeting tomorrow to start talking about how to open up businesses and how to develop procedures and steps. I would highly, highly recommend the board that let that format continue. We're giving the message loud and clear. We all want to open up businesses. It is very important that we allow the City Hollister and San Juan Batista to also participate because they are our partners and we all need to work together. Okay, thank you. Supervisor Jim Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the statements that I made earlier, I wanted to make sure I was clear on it. I don't want politics, not elected officials. I don't want politics to come into what business opens. That has nothing to do with who's going to open and who's not going to open. Absolutely, we need to have elected officials having oversight and paying attention to what's going on. But as soon as, the second that politics gets involved with this, you will lose even more than we've already lost in the trust of our community. So I caution anybody who's going to be on this committee, do it in a fair way. Come up with metrics that are fair, easy to understand and communicate, communicate, communicate. Do not under-communicate with the community. And as far as the committee that you recommended, Mr. Chair, so tomorrow, we talked about it last Friday and that committee needs to expand drastically. It can't just remain the way it is because it doesn't include business leaders. It doesn't include the proper staff personnel from the different cities and the county. We got to get, you know, Job Center, we got to get everybody, everybody's got to be involved. This has got to be a Herculean effort that we all agreed, I think Mr. Medina said, Supervisor, we need about 1.5 hours to go, maybe more, that we want to do that immediately today. We all said that, yes, let's do that. Let's get our economy going. Let's work with our health professionals and get this going in a safe way, safer way as we can. And I asked, actually before this meeting, I asked, I believe it was yesterday, I'm looking at Supervisor Patel because I can't remember if it was yesterday or Friday, if he would be able to fill in for me on Wednesday. And I support him working on that committee. I had a conflict for tomorrow before all this was worked out, so he was going to do that. I don't want to delay or change the date and I think he is very available to participate and I would recommend him being involved. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think you got good points on including business and the staff. Like if this is going to be a community-based wise, you're absolutely right. Businesses and other staff members need to be included. You're absolutely right. Okay.
And if we're treating that as a Brown Act committee, then it, you know, the appointment of committee member, I mean, members of the public that, you know, will have to decide how those members are going to be appointed, what process that they'll go through to appoint those members of the public.
Okay, all right. Then figure that out from legality perspective, Barbara?
Mr. Chair, are you okay with yourself and Supervisor Patel? Is that okay with you? Maybe we can get a consensus from the board so we don't have to come back and have another meeting tomorrow or before the meeting tomorrow?
Okay, I apologize Supervisor Gilio. What was the question again?
I just said, are you okay with Supervisor Patel and yourself serving on this business opening committee so we can just make sure we have a plan now so we don't delay staff at all?
Oh, no, no, absolutely. Totally agree, totally. Yes. Yeah, it'd be Supervisor Patel and myself.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And then we'll invite other members, other members of the business community. The goal is to open up as much as we can and open up those businesses that bring people back to work for San Bernardino County. That's really the goal and to protect public safety too.
In the interest of clarity, so are we using the, are we converting the, kind of the intergovernmental, where we, they've been meeting as an ad hoc from various different entities? Are we converting that to a formal committee? Or are we having Supervisor De La Cruz and Supervisor Patel create an ad hoc committee and then they're going to be inviting other members of businesses to come kind of in as needed? The latter?
Yeah.
Okay.
The latter would be faster to get rolling than if you need to, if you need to convert it, you know, I was just, let me, just one quick second, Mr. Chair, I apologize. I shouldn't, I should have asked your permission first. I think the latter would be better just to get it rolling right away. And if you need to convert it into a more formal committee, we can always do that at our next meeting on Tuesday, board meeting.
You're absolutely correct, absolutely correct. The more flexibility, the better. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my comments are, obviously you can sense my passion in this. That's the world I live in. I think it would be of a wise counsel from the board to support me to be on that ad hoc. But if you don't want to, that's obviously your decision. My recommendation is to make sure that we have a set standard of meetings, not just one meeting, not just two meetings. Let's make a commitment to have ongoing meetings. We need to beat, we need to beat this into the ground as far as the conversation goes to make sure that there's really some very thorough conversation. Because this is going to get really where the rubber gets to road and really hatching out how to implement this thing in a way that with the business input, with the legis, you know, the policymakers involved. And ultimately, it needs to be a public meeting, it needs to be where the, there's plenty of people paying attention, so it's in full disclosure and that way there's no question, you know, I agree with Supervisor Gilio where it's not political. This needs to be non-political for sure in a way that it's expedient and successful, right? But again, my strong belief is I'm committed to it and I could do it and I could be involved in it. If you think you have the time Supervisor De La Cruz or Chair De La Cruz, I respect that. I would urge you that if you can't be committed to this, maybe for whatever the reasons, that you at least appoint me as a, what's it called, a second in command basically, someone that could follow through if you can't make it.
Mr. Chair, I would support Peter Hernandez and Anthony Patel as the ad hoc committee.
And I would support that as well. This is be a big, big effort. This is not just one meeting once a week either.
Yes, Jim said also.
Well, I'm the chair. I make the committee makeup.
But we cannot, we can overrule that or not?
Well, it's, it's.
You can overrule.
So can we take a vote?
Well, I was wondering whether until at least next Tuesday to have the chair make the ad hoc committee on his own and then if you wanted to put it on the agenda for next week to do the, a different committee makeup.
Yeah. With all due respect, I don't think we can wait. With all due respect.
I agree, Peter. That's why I would say you and Anthony. That's my opinion.
I would be honored and privileged Supervisor Medina.
I support that. Both are independent, small, or I don't know about small, but business owners. So I think that's a really good format, but either way, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Well, I certainly support that as well.
So I would, I would put myself and Supervisor Patel to this committee and you can schedule any other meeting, another meeting to do as you guys wish.
So you're going against us three, us four, I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
It's officially also not on the agenda. I understand that it's an emergency item, but I guess holding it over till next week probably if the board wants to do a formal motion.
Yeah, we could do a formal decision. If we could bring this item back, I'd recommend it. County Council, Barbara, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to be clear though, this is not going to be delayed. We have a kind of ad hoc committee in place and I asked Supervisor Patel to fill in for me tomorrow because of a schedule conflict that I knew about last week. And Supervisor Patel will be there and Supervisor Jaime De La Cruz, the chair, will be there. There will be no delay and we will continue to make sure that businesses open. We can't, again, I just said it five minutes ago, maybe 10 now, we can't allow politics to slow this down. This is ridiculous. Let's keep this thing moving, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other direction for us?
No other, no other comments on this particular item, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now we will go to closed session? Is there anyone in the public that wish to speak on any of the closed session items?
Okay. We're removing the second item from the agenda. And the only item that will be in closed session is closed session conference with legal counsel pertaining pending litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9A, Preserve Our Rural Communities versus County San Benito et al., San Benito County Superior Court, Case Number C Use 20-0053. Pardon?
We have two public comments.
Yes, if there's any public comment.
Closed session only.
Is there any public comment on this? Oh, yeah.
Yes, this is Andy Shaw Coron.
Yes.
President of, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm the president of Preserve Our Rural Communities. We're the group that brought suit against the county supervisors and I like to say against the county supervisors and not against the people of San Benito County because the people of San Benito County spoke loud and clear using their constitutionally guaranteed right to use the referendum process. And they basically said that they did not want the developments along Highway 101. The county supervisors, I think, showed contempt for the public by going ahead and doing the C1 ordinance. And frankly, I think they violated both election law and in the process, they also violated California Constitution, which they swore an oath to defend because under the current circumstances, we have no ability to referend the C1 ordinance. I really appreciate the fact that only one of your supervisors, Jaime De La Cruz, seems to have any respect for the will of the people. And I'm really disturbed by the kinds of comments from most of you, as well as your supporters, where you attack the public and basically imply that they are stupid and that they were fooled when in reality, the folks who wanted to do the development had far more resources and frankly, put out deceptive advertising. So we're very happy to be pursuing this lawsuit because we think we are defending the people of San Benito County. of San Benito County, and frankly, defending the Constitution of the state of California. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Carl.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, this is Zachary Walton on behalf of the owner of the property that is the subject of the suit that Andy just described, and as you can imagine, I don't agree with his characterization, I think that there's some real important issues for the board to be considering about just appropriateness of the petition that they filed, and I hope that that's given some careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other speakers?
No, we do not. We have no more public comments, Mr. Chair. We have one person that just raised their hand.
Yes, hello, this is Salvador Mora. Regarding the closed session item, regarding the lawsuit brought to the county against the pork organization, you know, as the president, president of pork had mentioned that it's, the lawsuit is solely against the board of supervisors, not the residents of the county, I completely disagree with that, because it is the residents of San Benito County who will ultimately suffer, and potential future business owners, you know, and for the pork president to say that only the supporters of the failed measure K were, that they, accusing them that they were misleading the public, it could easily be said the same thing about the pork group, which many people have had experience with, and they straight out lied to them. So it can go back and forth, that's not the, the reason that I'm here to talk about. I hope the county does vigorously fight and defend this lawsuit, and it has nothing to do with, you know, the whole measure K, and this is the issue that I have with the pork group is, the measure wasn't about stopping commercial development, it was about zoning, strictly a zoning issue, and they always knew, which they failed to mention to the public, and the public found out after the fact that they were lied to, is that commercial development can continue under different zoning measures. So, you know, I, I hope that the community, and the community is waking up, because they do know that they were lied to and misled, and I hope that the county stays the course and fights this lawsuit to the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, we have one more.
Okay.
Hello, this is Mary Shaw Coron. I just wanted to say that a number of people who spoke have a financial interest in this, so I think they do have a conflict. I also wanted to point out that there's been some misleading information saying, I remember reading an article suggesting that this lawsuit is going to cost our county taxpayers, and I want to clarify that the supervisors themselves required an indemnification by the bedded-bell property developer, so the, the financial costs are borne actually by the developer in this lawsuit defending the county, so I just want to clarify that, because I think that is being used against this particular lawsuit, which is really to defend the rights of the elect, of the voters, who 60% voted against the development in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more...
Any other speakers?
We have no more public comments.
No more? Okay, now we'll go to closed session, we'll take a quick 10-minute break.